Please stand for the prayer at the beginning of the meeting. Community Development Director, Mr. Lita Torrell will lead us in the prayer.
Let us bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for gathering us here as a community on our journey to service, to service all citizens of Kenner and Jefferson Parish. We thank you for all of the blessings and ask for your continued guidance. Today, as we recognize World Food Day, we pray for those who hunger and we pray for a solution to combat hunger so that no child goes to bed without food. Dear God, we ask for your guidance over tonight's meeting and that you follow us on our way home and cover us with your grace and mercy. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Councilman Apistor, would you please lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum this evening. Councilmember Reyno is absent. Councilmember DeFranchise is serving and the acting mayor. The consent agenda this evening, we have item one, approval of minutes, the regular council... I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. We've actually received a request this evening to take item 13B at the beginning of the meeting. If I could get a motion and a second. Motion by Councilmember Conley, second by Councilmember Carroll, to change the order of business this evening to take item 13B at the beginning of the meeting. If all council members please could vote on the change of order of business for 13B. Mr. Chairman, motion passes five zero to change your order of business. Item 13B, a resolution establishing the River Arts Council, providing its duties, the qualification of its members, and the terms of office. I have a motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Segur on item 13B. Is there any discussion this afternoon on item 13B? I have...the mayor is in the queue, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Is there anyone, Mayor DeFranchise, would you like to give us some words on the arts, please?
If you could just give me a moment to mention... Phone on, there. I would like to list the names of our accepted candidates, please. And at the end, if Mr. Michael Mintz would like to come to the microphone and say a few words, I would be happy to relinquish the microphone at that time. We have Diane Georgie Garrett, Katie Pouchot, Christine Kozik, Kevin Hunts, Peter Barnitz, Melody McInnis, Dwight Harris, and Kathy Chopin. And first of all, I want to thank them for volunteering to be on this committee. I think it's going to have a lot of impact on Rivertown. I think it's going to be a great asset to Rivertown. And I'm so proud of having all these wonderful young people on there. And again, if I mispronounced any of their names, of course, my apologies to them. But again, would Mr. Mintz like to come to the microphone?
Thank you. Can anybody hear me? Just like to say, this is something we're very excited about. This has fallen right on the heels of us becoming a Main Street community. What we're hoping to get out of this is that we're going to get some community stakeholders involved that'll help start the creative placemaking process in Rivertown. This also falls right in line with our cultural district designation, which offers up tax-free incentives for original works of art. So we're hoping to do some public art projects in Rivertown as well throughout the city, as well as have some art markets to go along with all the Rivertown Main Street activities.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mintz. And again, congratulations to all these young people, and I believe the thanks of the entire city goes along with mine. And thank you, Councilman Carroll, for allowing me to speak.
Well, thank you very much, and on behalf of the entire council and everyone in the City of Kenner, we know art sometimes does not get the publicity that a lot of other the more physical-type sports and activities get, but we want to let everyone know that there are children who are very talented, who will someday become artists and actresses and actors. And we believe that in the City of Kenner, to be able to give them an opportunity to showcase their skills is a very important job that we have. So congratulations to everyone on this. Thank you.
Councilman Apistor.
Could we ask any of the members of the council that are here to come up so we can recognize them as well?
It's a fantastic idea.
It's not mine, not my idea. I took it from someone else.
You took it from somebody. Stick with it, Councilman.
Just would like to thank you guys personally for volunteering to help serve the community. And as the resolution says, you're all Kenner people, so certainly have a vested stake in improving the community, just as we do. And thank you for everything you will do.
If anyone would like to step up and to give us just a little bit about the expertise or the area that you particularly participate in, please step up to the mic if you would like to. Give your name and the area of the arts that you actually participate in, if you would like to, please.
My name is Peter Barnitz, and I'm the Artist in Residence at Kenner Discovery Health and Science Academy. And I teach pre-K through 7th grade. And also, I'm a professional artist also, and I show all around New Orleans and across the US.
My name's Kevin Hunts. Some of you already know me because I work for the City of Kenner. And I work in Rivertown, which I felt like I was, you know, really wanting to do this because I'm an artist and I work in Rivertown, and I want to see a lot done over there. It really needs it, and I think we can do it.
Hi, I'm Kathy Chopin, and my expertise is in theater. I have been involved, I'm a member of Actors Equity. Of course, they don't really hire too many equity people here, but I am really excited to give what I know to the community. When you mentioned actors and actresses, they have a lot of talented people in this city, as you can see when you look at movies that are being done in the city. I've also done film, so I'm hoping that I can bring something to the young people and to the Arts Council, the do's and the don'ts. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melody McInnis. A few of you already know me. I was a summer intern for the City of Kenner for four years. I'm also a fine art student at the University of New Orleans. I have also worked for many of the art markets in New Orleans, and I'm a professional artist who shows around the city.
Hello, I'm Katie Pouchot. I'm a graduate from Louisiana State University with a degree in fine art, painting and drawing, and graphic design. I do graphic design for First Lake Properties as well as for myself, and I'd like to start showing around Kenner and try to get the arts opened up here and, you know, teach younger people about art and try to help any way I can, so.
My name is Dwight Harris. My specialty is photography. I've been involved in documenting New Orleans culture for the last 50 years or so, and I feel I can contribute that to the council.
Hi, my name is Diane Georgie Garrett. My passion in life has always been art. I've done it since a child. I have a degree from LSU in interior design and art. I've done faux finishing throughout the city of New Orleans, and I've done hair for the past 35 years, and that has been my artistic talent and the way to make money. But I still paint a lot, and art has always been my passion. So when this came up, I felt that I could contribute something, whether it be ideas or setting up workshops for kids. I think kids, a lot of children, don't have the chance to have art classes or performing arts classes, and it's one of the first things that's always cut in schools, and that kills me. So I just wanted to be a part of this, starting it off in Rivertown, and I hope it's a huge success. Thank you.
You know, thank you very much, and it is obvious that there is a large selection of different expertise as it relates to all of the arts, and we are lucky as a city to be able to have you on our council, on the committee, to show your expertise over the... there's a lot of years, a lot of expertise in what you do, and we look forward to this, bringing it to the community, and look forward to expressing Kenner. Like someone has always said, a picture is a thousand words, and for you guys to be able to participate in that aspect, I think it will showcase Kenner for many, many years to come. Thank you very much for your participation.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, all council members please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes five zero. The consent agenda this evening. Item one is approval of minutes, the regular council meeting of October 2nd, 2014. Item two is approval of alcoholic beverage permit applications. We have none. Item 3A is application number 1842/14, Treasure Chest Casino, to hold a public gathering on November 7th, 2014, from 6:30 to 9:30 PM for an outdoor concert at 5050 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3B is application number 1844/14, South Lake Villages, to hold a public gathering on October 31st, 2014, from 5:00 PM to 11:00 PM for a block party on Gumbayou in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3C is application number 1845/14, Washington Montessori School, to hold a public gathering on February 13th, 2015, from 1:00 PM to 2:30 PM for a Mardi Gras parade at 606 Clay Street in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3D is application number 1847/14, the City of Kenner to hold a public gathering on November 1st, 2014, through October 24, 2015, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and January through March from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM for a farmer's market at the Exhibition Hall parking lot at 410 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3E is application number 1848/14, Custom Vapors LLC, to hold a public gathering on October 26, 2014, from 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM for a customer appreciation gathering at 1928 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 3F is application number 1849/14, Manuel Rodriguez, to hold a public gathering on October 25th, 2014, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM for a Halloween block party in the 4300 block of Alabama Avenue in Kenner, Louisiana. Item 4 is correspondence reports from the mayor, CAO, or department heads. Item 4A, at the request of the administration, an update from Doug Dote on the Emergency Management Grant to retrofit the Emergency Operations Center.
Thank you, Mr. Dote.
I have some material that I'd like to pass out to the council and to the members. Council members, I'm pleased to announce that on Tuesday, October 7th, 2014, Mary Yenney and members of his staff met with representatives of the Governor's Office of Homeland Security and Emergency Preparedness, or GOSEP, to discuss a $371,000 grant awarded to the city. This grant will provide for wind retrofit at City Hall Annex D, that's the Public Works Complex located at 1610 Reverend Richard Wilson Drive. The city will be eligible for $278,456 federal funds with a local match of 92,018 or 25%. The project will include installation of motorized roll-down storm shutters on both the first and second level windows at the facility, as well as enclosure of stairwells on either side of the building. The city's Emergency Operations Center, which is used to coordinate local crisis response, relief, and recovery activities, is located within the Public Works Building. This project is specifically designed to provide protection for the 100 or more city employees, including Public Works, code enforcement, recreation, fire, police, directors, assistant directors, and elected officials who occupy the facility, support the EOC operations that work in the field during a major hurricane. As you can see from the imagery on the...we have a picture of the shutters on the top portion of the facility as they now appear. The roll-down shutters provide superior protection for our personnel, infrastructure, and equipment, and saves cost in terms of personnel and materials needed to board and shutter the facility on an annual basis. If you go to the next slide, you'll see at the front of the building, and the next slide is the rear of the building, and you can see where, at the rear of the building, the next slide, contrast between the shutters, boarding, and also unprotected glass. Right now, what occurs on an annual basis is the entire structure has to be boarded and shuttered, and then that has to be removed, so it's a considerable cost to the city in both materials and work. And so what we plan to do is, we have done one portion of the facility with motorized roll-down shutters, and we now plan to do the remaining. The Hazard Mitigation Grant Program award was approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency on August 28th after a year-long application process undertaken by Mr. Jose Gonzalez and his staff, along with the Office of Emergency Management. Planning Department Grants Administrator Mike Yens processed the application on behalf of the city. The city has already budgeted funds needed to meet the local match, and preparations to bid this project are underway by our Public Works and Purchasing Departments. The shutters are projected to be in place before the start of the 2015 storm season. Kenner's Office of Emergency Management plans, trains, exercises, and works closely with parish, regional, state, and federal emergency management officials throughout the year. This close working relationship has allowed the city administration to advocate effectively for Kenner's unique emergency management and recovery needs. This grant demonstrates that GOSEP and FEMA view Kenner's EOC as worthy of significant investment, one that meets both state and federal funding criteria, and one that helps our city meet national emergency management performance goals. I've provided a packet to each one of you, providing more detailed information on the EOC. And if we go to the next slide, we can show, this is the operations room of the Emergency Operations Center on the second floor of the facility. Next slide. This is a conference room, a map room, that we utilize for our conference calls with the parish, state, and federal agencies during a hurricane or other disaster. Next. This is a media room, which we can sit up to 100 people in this room and provide meetings, briefings of our emergency management, police, fire department personnel. It's also used as a media post in order to provide press releases, also used for training our personnel. It also can be used as a continuity site in the event this facility here is uninhabitable for some reason, and we need this...a chamber to hold meetings such as a council meeting or court. Next. On the lower level of the facility is, we have two bunk rooms. This is the first bunk room with about 40, 45 bunks in it, and then next is a smaller bunk room with about six or eight bunks in it. This is to accommodate our personnel. Of course, during the hurricane season, we utilize the entire building, not just the bunk rooms, in order to have facilities for our people who work in the field to stay at. Next. Next. Here's a meal service area that we can fit up to about 60 or so people in there to feed these people during an emergency operation. This is also used for meetings and other gatherings. And next, this is a secure storage facility that we have, and a small laundry room on the first floor of the facility. So as you can see, this would be benefiting the numerous people that we have on staff who remain here during emergency events. These are the people who go out in the field and clean the drains and set up the barricades and hook up the generators and all those sorts of things. So this is specifically designed to provide safe shelter for those individuals during a storm situation. I'll be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Mr. Dote, I'd just like to say, you know, thank you for your hard work coming in. Since you've been in the position as Emergency Preparedness Director, we have constantly been involved with the information as it relates, not only to the City of Kenner, but we all know that Jefferson Parish leads the parish on emergencies, on evacuations. But it has been my experience and my understanding that the people who live in the City of Kenner still likes to get their information about the City of Kenner from the Kenner officials. And even though the parish is responsible in a sense for that, it is important or imperative that we, as council members, the administration, you in your position, to be able to be updated on the situations as it relates to fire, the police department, evacuations, and information like that. People are just a little bit more comfortable getting the information from one of our own, and I believe in this position, as you've been doing a fantastic job. We've been blessed this year, we...well, let me hold back on that. We are blessed so far without any major catastrophes or hurricane-related issues, and we look forward to that in the future, obviously. We hope we never get them, but it is obvious that when we do, we feel comfortable that we will be able to respond correctly and to be able to pass information on to the people in our community. So thank you a lot for your hard work.
Thank you.
I don't see any more lights on, sir, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. This evening, we also have item 4B, at the request of the administration, an introduction of the Tulane University School...I'm so sorry, sir, that's actually a typo. This is actually supposed to be...item 4B is a presentation by the IT Department on the mobile device program application that they have developed.
Okay, who's going to be giving that presentation?
Ms. Valerie Wagisback, I believe.
Ms. Wagisback? Well, she stepped out for a minute.
We've been waiting for you.
I'm very sorry, I thought I had a moment. I apologize. Tonight, what I was asked to do, and what I wanted to do, was come and speak to each of you. We've sent out some press regarding this, we've put it on our Facebook page, but the City of Kenner has launched its mobile application. And I kind of wanted to go over why and some of the reasons. I'm sorry, I'm a little out of breath, man. But we are the first government in Jefferson Parish to actually launch a mobile application. And part of the reasons we started looking at this was some of the statistics that led us to believe that this would be of great convenience to Kenner's residents. Some of the statistics show that 8% of a person's day...you can go to the next slide. 8% of a person's day who owns a smartphone is spent looking at a mobile screen. More than 50% of the United States population now owns a smartphone. And Americans who own smartphones or mobile devices also spend approximately two hours per day on a mobile device. One in four online searches are conducted on a mobile device, and most Americans are never more than 10 feet away from his or her smartphone. So it's for this reason that we felt that the City of Kenner would benefit from an app. We all know that lifestyles have changed, everyone's on the go, everything is fast-paced, and we just felt that this was something that would be of good use to our residents and business owners. Next slide. So the app was launched on September 24th, and again, as I said, we're the first local government in Jefferson Parish to have its own mobile application. The application is available on all Apple and Android devices. It provides fast access to a variety of city services, information, automatic updates, and alerts. Next slide. So what I'm going to do is quickly go through the application and its different components, and I'll start with the homepage. The homepage is the first thing you see when you open the City of Kenner app. It provides links to location services, alerts, Kenner website. There is a share button and the more button. The next slide. The following...the location page is a map. It provides a map to show you where the main campus is. It gives you the address, it lists the hours of operation, and it provides a call button where you just tap that button and it automatically calls City Hall for you. You tap the direction button, you immediately get brought to maps to get directions to the city via your GPS on your phone. You tap the email button, you can send an email straight to City Hall, or the website button, which gives you website access. At the top of the app, you'll see a share button, and that allows you to share directions or location information for the city. If I'm tapping that, and you can do it via email, text, Facebook, or Twitter. Next slide. The alerts page, what I feel is probably one of the most important aspects of this and why we...one of the reasons we did it. This app allows us to send push notifications. And a push notification is basically if you have an app on your phone and it pops up as an alert, just like, you know, if you have WDSU or WWL, it pops up as an alert. That's because you're allowing that app to give you a push notification. And the notifications can be deleted, they can be shared, but they're stored right there in sequential order, and, you know, again, you can share them via all the social media outlets or via email or text. And I'll get to this in a little bit, but the importance of this is during emergency situations when your power may be out and all you have left is your mobile device that's battery-operated. So this was one important aspect we felt was very important. Next slide. The next button is the website link, which obviously takes you straight to the Kenner website. Next slide. The share page is just a page specifically for you to click-tap that share button. It gives you the option to share, again, via email, Facebook, Twitter, Google Plus, or text message. Next slide. And then you get to the more button, which takes you off of the main screen of the app, and it brings you to the rest of the components of the app. Next slide. The first option is to go to the city directory. The city directory provides you a listing of all departments, contact information for all elected officials. And if you go to the next slide, Teresa, you'll see when you click on any department, like if that's IT right there, you'll see the department's director, the location, telephone number, and email address. And that's the same for the elected officials for the council office and the mayor's office as well. Go to the next one. The next thing, under the more section, is the Kenner calendar link. I talked about the Kenner calendar at a council meeting maybe a couple of years ago. It's just a month, a month at a glance of what's going on in the City of Kenner, Kenner events. And you click...if you go to the Kenner calendar on the website and you click the event, you know, a dialog box pops up with all of the event's details. So this button just provides you fast access to that. Next. The press releases link takes you to the press...oh, I did it wrong. Be back. The press releases link takes you to the press releases page of the website, and all of the links are active. You touch them, the PDF image pops up. The Facebook link brings you straight to the City of Kenner's Facebook page. Next. Twitter link, same thing, straight to our Twitter handle. The pay tickets link allows you to access online ticket payments, but only for tickets that do not require a court appearance. It's not going to let you pay a ticket unless, you know, if you're required to appear in court, you can't do it. But you have to have your ticket number for security reasons. We don't allow any other forms of identification for online ticket payments. The next one is the pay taxes link. Again, we have a mobile-friendly version of that as well. You can pay your taxes from the app. The Kenner Cam...I have to be honest, the Kenner Cam wasn't really my idea. It... And if it's approved, it's uploaded to the gallery of the website, of the application. It's just that I'm getting some kind of crazy pictures, so we'll have to see how that goes right now. So, we'll see. But it's a good idea. You know, it's meant to showcase all the family and friends and everyone having fun at Kenner, Kenner events, so we shall see. The next slide. The gallery, again, is where any photo albums we create via the app, they'll all go there. And then, we thought it was important, Entergy has a really nice street light repair link. And so, we felt that we could add a button and give access to that as well. And then, we have a listing of Kenner holidays, just so that users can see when the city is closed, and we have that by the year. So, to download it, if you go to the Google Play Store on your Android phone, you search city of Kenner, or you go to the Apple Store, the App Store on your iPhone, and you search the city of Kenner there, and that's how you can reach it. Well, we have a QR code for it as well, and I have some printouts. If you have a QR scanner on your phone, you can pick one up right here, up here by the agendas, and you can just scan it and it'll take you straight to where you can download it. And to update it, a lot of people turn off automatic updates on their phones just to save battery life, but for this app, all you have to do, if the app's open, just shake your phone and it'll automatically update for you. So, that's all I think I have. And if you download it, you know, you can look around and see for yourself what it has to offer, and we ask that you spread the word. We look forward to enhancing the app, building more things into it. We're open to suggestions. As y'all know, that's always what I say when I'm up here. If you have any ideas, any suggestions, please let me know. We only want to make it better and more user-friendly and more useful to the public, so.
Well, thank you, Ms. Wagisback. I'd just like to say that as far as it relates to the calendar, the events that are on there, are there only city events, or is it an opportunity for the public to submit information to you for you to be able to put information on there for all the organizations, say the Kiwanis or the Elks or?
If they're, if they work in cooperation with the city of Kenner, for example, if it's a city-sponsored event, or like the Kiwanis, they work in cooperation with the city, then yes, it's allowed to go on there. But they have to have some type of cooperative endeavor, cooperative endeavor with the city or be affiliated with the city in some way.
How do you go about getting signed up to have a cooperative endeavor? Or how do you go about establishing that?
I mean, I'm pretty sure that that has to go through, you know, through the administration, through the mayor's office. There's paperwork that has to be drafted by the city attorney's office. I think, I don't want to speak out of turn. I think that's more of a legal question, but, I mean, it can be done, you know.
Okay. I'd like to get that information.
For example, you'll see, you'll see things like Oktoberfest. You'll see Race to the Lake. You'll see, you know, the Kiwanis meetings. You'll see Musics in the Park. You'll see movies in the park. You'll see recreation. You'll see game scheduling, things like that.
Okay. Because I'm sure we're going to probably get calls asking, you know, how do we get this information to be part of the endeavor? And if you can find out and send it to my office, if I am asked, I'm able to pass that information on to people about how do they go about submitting information if it is an event, a civic-related event that they'd like to get some exposure on.
Sure.
And before I let some of my other colleagues speak, as it relates to the Kenner Cam, I want to say that you are a brave woman to be able to filter a lot of stuff that you might be getting from people all over. So, I'm glad you're there to filter.
I felt like I needed to let y'all know that I don't know how long that's going to stay around, you know.
Yeah. I think you will be the first person to know the, how long it's going to last, but, you know.
We saw that by putting a disclaimer on there, that this is being sent in and is a public record might help, but.
Yes, that may be a good idea.
Right.
Well, thank you very much for all your support. We look forward for this. This is up and running, and people can now activate this, you know, as we speak right now. We look forward to that, and I don't see any more lights on, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to it. Thank you.
Item 5 is acceptance rejection of bids requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item 6 is change orders requiring an expenditure of less than $5,000. We have none. Item 7 is acceptance of committee findings for final passage. We have none. Item 8 is re-subdivision ordinances for final passage. We have none. I have a motion by Councilmember Conley, seconded by Councilmember Carroll for the consent agenda. All members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Under the public appearance agenda this evening, we have item 9, public hearings for final passage. We have none. Item 10 is opening of bids. We have none. Item 11 is reclassification of zoning for final passage. We have none. Item 12 is other ordinances for final passage. Item 12A is summary ordinance number 11,767, an ordinance designated and naming the Office of Inspection and Code Enforcement located at Building B, Suite 101 Williams Boulevard in Kenner, Louisiana, the Matthew Junior Chiro Office of Inspections and Code Enforcement. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request this evening for a one-meeting deferral. I have a motion by Councilmember Segura, seconded by Councilmember Carroll for a one-meeting deferral. All council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 12B is summary ordinance number 11,784, an ordinance dedicating funds received from the sale of city-owned movable and immovable property and providing for related matters.
A motion by Councilwoman Segura, seconded by Councilwoman Conley.
Councilmember Segura?
Councilwoman Segura, you have the floor.
Thank you. What we're doing here with this piece of legislation is just trying to put monies that do come in from the sale of city streets or some buildings that the city no longer needs and put it into a fund, a capital fund, that the council will use to approve the expenditures after a variety of steps have been accomplished. First, we want to see that the police department gets their 24%, which is laid out in the systematic funding formula of how we fund our police department. This is something that they need, and this will help them out. So, we wanted to ensure that that money gets dedicated to them. It's 24%. The other 76%, as I said, will go into a capital fund that will be a whole lot more transparent as to where these funds are coming from and where they are going to be spent on. With this fund, we will, it can be entertained for any councilman for his district, any city department to make a request for need, and it will be addressed through the transparency of having public hearing, through the processes that we have in place. One of the things that particularly on infrastructure, streets and whatever type of infrastructure repair or construction that needs to be, we looked at this and said, well, you know, the city as a whole has a lot of needs. And just take, for example, street repair. There may be better need for this fund, or this money coming in from the sale of a street in one district to be used in a citywide infrastructure repair. But before we look at it, we're going to challenge the engineers, the professionals, to rank the projects and put them in a ranking so that we can look at that and see what is the most important need at the time for that money to be spent on. So, it's just not something that's just kind of, you know, just goes out and about and gets spent and not have any reason and solid logic behind spending it. It is our intention that we treat the city as a city as a whole, and we spend money as needed on city projects that are most important at the time. That's, thank you.
Councilman Conley, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Council President. Basically, I'm not going to echo or reiterate what Councilwoman Segura said. This has been a work in progress. Back two months ago, we put on an ordinance to rescind ordinance 9325 for the purpose of recognizing that there are citywide projects that might take priority. We have citywide infrastructure that needs attention, but that's not to say that the money won't stay in the district in which it comes. It keeps the spirit of ordinance 9325 at heart, but it lets this council bring it up before this board. It lets the citizens come up and have input. We can have public hearings, and people can follow the money. It just doesn't go off, and people wonder whatever happened to that money we got from this X Street or Y Street. It would be vetted. We will have public debate on it. And as Councilwoman Segura said, we will have, we will meet the priority needs of the entire city, and which includes the five districts. So, you know, at first, I had put on an ordinance, Councilwoman Segura and I had put on an ordinance to rescind 9325. We got some calls from some constituents wanting the money to stay in the council's control for infrastructure projects and things of that nature. Some of the council worked with me to flesh it out a little more, which is, you know, what it's all about. So, again, the whole purpose is transparency, 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 to let people follow the money, see what the money is, where it goes, and what it's used for. So, I'll be, of course, supporting this.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Nipastal, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm also supporting this legislation because, but my focus is on the message that I believe this sends to the entire community, and I think this is a major step towards eliminating territorial and parochial politics within the city of Kenner. When I ran for the office that I currently occupy, one of my pledges is that we would do what is in the best interest of the city as a whole at all times, and I believe that needs to be our focus at all times. To have an ordinance in place that predetermines where money must be spent without being able to assess at the moment in time what is the highest priority of the city, to me, is not for the benefit of the entire city as a whole. We need the discretion and the ability that once a city asset is sold, when a city asset is sold, that at that point in time, this council of seven people representing every citizen in the city can determine at that moment what is the most pressing need and where is that. Maybe it is in the same district where the city assets were sold. Maybe it is. But if it's not, we need the discretion to be able to address the city's top priority at that moment in time. And that's what I think this provides and allows the city as a whole to do, because keeping in mind, the assets that would be sold, whether it's a building, whether it's a street, whatever it may be, is not a district asset. There are no district assets. They are city assets for every citizen in the city of Kenner, and that's why I feel strongly in favor of this. I think the best line in the legislation is whereas these capital asset project needs transcend district council lines. And that's what I believe is important. And for that reason, I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this legislation. I think it best serves District 5 and all five districts in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Klein, you have the floor.
I too support this ordinance. I believe it's important that the city sells assets that the.
Funds go to the entire city, not an individual district. I believe that it's fair and it's the right thing to do, and I support the ordinance. Some of these assets that the city will be selling are costly. They have been costly. The city's paid for these assets. They're paid to maintain the assets, and when they're sold, I think the funds should go to the entire city. So, I wholeheartedly support this. And in addition, that the police department will be entitled to a portion of these funds, which I support that also. So, for all those reasons, I support the ordinance.
Thank you, Councilman. And I guess it's my turn to speak on this, and then there's no misunderstanding here. I have verbally said before that I am totally against this. We have worked together on this, but at the end of our conversations, me personally as the councilman of District 1, will not be supporting this ordinance. And considering the fact that I have been on the council, you know, a little bit longer than our, my fellow colleagues up here right now, this ordinance was put into place in 2006. It has been on the board by the council before us, who have had numerous years of experience having had the opportunity to vet the ordinance for many years, and they never came to the conclusion that anything was being non-transparent. I will say personally that all of the streets that have ever been sold within District 1, at the meeting when the streets were sold, it was immediately directed toward a project. It was never put into a budget to go off into the lost area. It was immediately addressing infrastructure projects that needed to be addressed within the city, within the district. I still firmly believe that. I believe the sale of streets, they are not something that happens on a regular basis or a monthly basis. Sometimes, we may not have a street sold the entire year. I firmly believe that District 1 and 2, or and have been, maybe I'm mistaken, over the last 10 years, there have only been streets sold within District 1 and 2. District 3, 4, and 5, I don't believe there's ever been a real sale of streets, because that's the more developed area within the city. I could be wrong, but I don't believe there have been streets sold within it. And the reasoning is the District 1 and District 2 are the oldest part of the city. I believe when you deplete an area, a district, of something, it is only natural to put it back into the district. We in District 1 have the most antiquated infrastructure. We have terracotta pipes. To be able to, at the time of the sale, to use that money to improve the infrastructure, I believe, is helping the city. It is helping the city as it relates to the police department, the fire department, EMS, Public Works, fleet management, everyone for businesses to improve our infrastructure. And I believe this is the gist of this ordinance, to ensure that it gives the council people an opportunity to do projects not only that the city can do, but we can do as individuals, because we know the priorities for our district better than each one of us. I believe when it now is given back to the general budget, and that I believe it will come more, become more political, become more of an issue to try to determine who will get the money as opposed to the district that the money came out of, to immediately put it back in. That's just my opinion, and I believe it has worked fantastically. There's nothing against the police department, because I believe not only the police department, but the fire department, the recreation department, fleet department, Public Works, all need additional funds. I believe the 24%, as Councilwoman Segura suggested, relates only to the sales tax and property tax, that 24%, not funds, because if that's the case, why not start taking the 24% from the hotel motel or the casino or the CBDG? I don't think we want to go down that road unless I'm wrong, and we want to go down that road. So, it is not, as some people may have suggested, that it is something against the police department. That is not the case. We have a fantastic police department. We, as a council, have supported the budget for the police department and every council that I have been on and every council before me. That is not the issue. We have never laid off an individual. We have always have the top-notch equipment, vehicles. So, the police department, in my opinion, are being funded to the capacity to be able to put us in a position to protect our citizens. But I know for a fact that District 1 and District 2, where most of the sales in the future will come from, I don't see a lot of streets being sold in 3, 4, and 5. I just don't see that happening. But I do recognize 1 and 2, it will be. And as a councilman, it is our responsibility to ensure that we are doing the things that is needed for the people within our district. We all taken notes, all of us have, to follow the rules and the charter within the city. This is true. But it's not our responsibility to abdicate from the people who elected us, who we know better than anyone of the council within our district, what needs to be. is needed for the people within our district. We all taking notes, all of us have to follow the rules and the charter within the city. This is true. But it is, but it's not our responsibility to abdicate from the people who elected us, who we know better than anyone of the council within our district, what needs to be done. And I think that's our responsibility to do that. So, to change this ordinance without maybe looking at it further as a new council is doing the wrong thing and that we should leave it as it is. And to maybe look at it in the future, maybe some changes to be made and maybe come up with something better. But just to put it out there and for us to, to haggle over it is not the thing to do. And because that's what it will become. It will become political. It will become territorial and to determine from engineers and someone to determine who should get the money as opposed to the people from each district who knows that it's coming from their district and we would like to put these funds back in to make it better. So, I will not be supporting this particular ordinance. Thank you. Chief Glazer, you have the floor, sir.
Just to correct you on a couple of points you made where no one at the police department has ever been laid off. When the funding formula was changed around 2004, 2005, there were a large number of layoffs within the police department. So, just wanted to give you, correct you with that a little bit. And the, the council is going to have their, their say where it's spent. The police department was at 24%. Since that funding formula back in 2004 and '05 was changed, we've not had a capital budget in the police department. Capital purchases are made out of operating budgets. That's why we always are a million and a half over the funding formula now. We built a building in 2000 with no tax increase. The funding formula was in place that adequately funded equipment, personnel raises. We don't have a set raise like a fire department does. We are constantly reevaluating with the use of technology to eliminate ongoing wages, large purchases. We were the first, the first department around here, if you remember, in 1994 to buy a command center. The command center took a lot of heat because it was unnecessary. It was extravagant. Now, everyone has it. Everyone has the latest, the greatest, and we still have an old one. It's adequate. We don't need a new one. But you can't constantly beat up the police department. I'm glad these four councilmen here have already openly said they, they're going to support this because, as you said, we don't sell out of buildings, sell out of streets. So, when we do get a little money from it, it's going to go right back into capital improvement. We'll buy vehicles. We in dire need of automobiles. We can't buy automobiles out of our budget now. We use seized funds exclusively to buy automobiles. So, that's what we, that's how we operate this police department. We wait until we get enough dedicated funds through the court system to buy 10, a dozen cars at a time. And when you have, I have it here with me, we have 240, 250 pieces of equipment. That's everything from a four-wheeler, a golf cart, all the way up to the largest trucks we have. And we replace that as we can. Some of the stuff gets old. You, you've got to imagine when you have police cars, responding to calls, you want to have them properly equipped, properly, I guess, maintained because if it's not, it's going to cause, it's going to cause trouble. So, that's what we, that's what we're working today. And I just wanted to comment on, we did have layoffs in the past. And the police department was funded adequately in the past. The funding was cut. The funding was cut and it remains to this day, that same funding formula. And we're, we're trying to, within the police department, come up with ideas to raise the revenue without writing more tickets. I can say the tickets have been, the court fines in the last two months have been down under budget about $140,000. So, we can go out and write all kinds of tickets and that would send the wrong, I mean, the wrong message. So, we, we address problems in and around the city, and that's how we run the police department. And this 24% of a, of a sale of a, of a city asset that being dedicated to the police department will help out greatly.
Thank you, Chief. And, and just, just to answer your question, when I said that there have not been any layoffs, it was relating to my tenure on the council when I said no layoffs, which started in 2010. Well, actually, 2009. That was the timeframe that I was referring to. And I understand your position as the chief. It is your responsibility, just like it is our responsibility, to always to try to ensure additional funds. And you are doing your job, and there's nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying that not only the police department, but the fire department and other departments also have taken cuts and have, are trying to make, do what they have as a, as a budget. We all are. And, and it's something we will continue to do until things start getting better. So, we all have to participate in this, this budgetary situation we are in as a city, as a state, and as a country. So, we all have to do it. What I merely also stated was that we have done what we have to do, in my opinion, to fund the police department since my tenure on the council to ensure that we have had a top-notch department and not lag in a, in a way that it is really has affected. And I'm not a policeman, so you have more technical information about this. Just from my perspective, when we do the budget, we do as a council what we have to do to ensure the budget is there to ensure that the citizens feel safe based on the budget that we have. So, that was I was merely saying, not attacking the, the police department, only speaking from my point of reference from being on the council. And I appreciate your concern and I appreciate everybody's concern. This is just my opinion. This is, when I said about the 24%, I believe is, in my opinion, related to the sale tax and property tax. So, going forward, this is, this, my disapproval with this ordinance, and I believe it should stay the same to address the needs of the two oldest districts within the city that desperately needs it. Mary Yena, you have the floor, please. I mean, DeFrances.
I don't quite think we're the same gender and don't look the same, but that's okay.
No, you look better than him. Let me see that.
Well, thank you. I don't know how he'll feel about it. But let me just make a quick point, please. I, I won't belabor it. Simply on behalf of myself as well as, as the administration and the mayor, we are in support of this. I will tell you, this has been something that has been going on for quite a while. I will tell you, when I first gone on the council, I had some misgivings about, about this from the beginning, that perhaps we should not limit it just to one district because there are needs throughout the city. And as I've said so many other times, and the administration has concurred, no one district can succeed if the rest of the city fails. And, and that's what we have to stop doing, is exactly what Councilman Impastada indicated. We have to stop being so provincial and look at the city as a whole and the needs of the city as a whole. And one small point, with all due respect, Councilman Carroll, please. We cannot dedicate the money from the motel, hotel tax, for example, to the police department because it's dedicated and it would be illegal for us to do so. And so, sometimes we have very limited choices in how we can, you know, use it, get extra money, whether it's to fund the police department or some other entity. And I just wanted to point that out. Thank you. And all of a sudden, I have a frog in my throat, so forgive me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frances. I, I don't see anyone else on the council to speak. There is a gentleman standing up. You want, you want to close now, Mike? Yes. And before Councilman Segura closes, please state your name and address.
Al Morella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, Fifth District, 42 years. Thank you, Councilman Segura. I too am opposed to this ordinance, and I'm going to tell you why. Once you take the requirement out, right now, this is just a sale of city streets. This is not the sale of vehicles or movable objects. This is, the way this ordinance is on the books right now, this just concerns the sale of city streets. Once you take the requirement out of this ordinance and you make it optional, in my opinion, it becomes a political tool. Now, I've seen, in the 42 years I've been living in the city of Kenner, I've seen many a times where factions of council members on this council have deliberately put their foot on the throat of districts, councilmen who represent districts, who was opposed to their agenda. I don't want to see that happen no more up here. I'm not saying this council would do that, but the opening would be there in case you do or want to engage in any kind of reprisals. So, I'm opposed to this. I agree with Councilman Carroll. I think you all, I, I think you all should vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address.
Thank you, Councilman Carroll. Walt Benetti, 3009 Illinois Avenue in Councilman Segura's district. I am too opposed to this, and, and I think it negatively impacts Districts One and Two, of which I am a resident. I respectfully disagree with, with Councilman Impastado, that I believe that he, as well as Councilman Segura, were voted in to represent first the best interests of their district. And this negatively impacts District Two without positively impacting any other district. The money will go into the city's general fund, which may or may not go to district projects versus city projects. But it will have a negative impact on District One in particular and to a certain extent, District Two. And that's why I'm, I'm opposed to this. I, I realize you've all already made up your mind and voiced your opinions, but I also think that without Councilwoman DeFrances here, who has voiced her, her approval, and Councilman Reyno, that this should be tabled until we can get all seven council members on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, hold on. Councilman Impastada would like to say something. Councilman Impastada. Yeah. You have, you don't have it?
It's on, Sarah. Go ahead.
Still not seeing it. Oh, mic's on. Not getting the picture, the mic button. Anyway, I just want to make clear that, that everyone understands the money is dedicated to capital projects. The money remains dedicated to capital projects. So, there should not, I don't want anyone to be misled into thinking somehow the money goes into the abyss, as sometimes is the accusation made towards the general fund and the budget. That is not accurate. It is capital projects. Any capital improvement in the city benefits not only that district that the improvement is made in, but the city as a whole. So, it absolutely does benefit the city and benefits that district. And the other thing is, I don't, I don't want a suggestion that, oh, I see you've already made your minds up. We listen to everything that's being said and everything in the room. Yes, we have leanings and say where we're going to, you know, where we feel, but I want to make clear that I listen to every comment being made by every person that speaks at that podium, whether it's Mr. Morella, Mr. Benetti, anyone else. Nonetheless, in this instance, the comments do not persuade me to go the other way because I still think, maintain that the best interest of the city as a whole is to put this current ordinance in place and let the money be sent for the best interest of the city as a whole. And in District Five, I can tell you, there are several projects that are being contemplated at this point in time that may very well involve the sale of assets within District Five. So, I am readily accepting that the revenues from the sale of those streets may not be used for District Five unless at that point in time, it is in the best interest of the city that it be used for District Five. So, it will impact District Five just as much as it does any other district. And I would hope, I have the confidence in my six other colleagues on the council, that this will not be political gamesmanship and that if, in fact, Districts One and Two are in the most dire need, then we will, in fact, make sure that it's used to serve those dire needs. And I have the confidence that the citizens of the city in Kenner put the right people on this dais and elected them with the confidence of being able to make those decisions. So, thank you. Thank you for the time, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Segura, excuse me, Mr. Quigley, you have the floor.
I just want to comment that this is more than sale of city streets. It's actually city-owned movable and immovable property. So, that would include buildings, surplus property, and streets. So, and I know it's, there's been a lot of comments about streets, but I just want to make it clear that this encompasses both movable and immovable city property.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Segura, now to close.
Thank you. Let me, for the sake of the audience who may not have a copy of the legislation in front of them, I'm going to read, whereas the council, the city of Kenner hereby ordained Section One, "76% of all revenues received from the sale of immovable or immovable property owned by the city of Kenner shall be dedicated to the city of Kenner capital asset improvement expenditures, not the general fund." Section Two, "24% of all revenues received from the sale of any movable or immovable property owned by the city of Kenner shall be dedicated to the Kenner Police Department capital asset improvement expenditure, not general fund." Section Three, "That the dedication of certain surplus property auction revenues from the Kenner Police Department and the Kenner Fire Department capital accounts by ordinance shall remain in those departments." Next. In, in respect of Councilman Carroll's comment that he has the longest tenure of the councilmen that are up here right now, I respect that. Yes, he does have those two years over us. In 1974, the city entered into a charter which dedicated its direction. I was an employee of this city at that time. I lived through the formation of that charter. I lived through the formation of the new city council that would then enact that charter. So, I am very familiar with what was intended at the time of those discussions. I attended those meetings. The council, through the charter, was told, "You must systematically fund your police department." The council chose to dedicate 24% of the funds that were unanticipated or undedicated. So, what we have today is we have a lot of funds that were not in place at the time that this council was, set this funding formula up, that have now been directly dedicated for other purposes when they were envisioned, whether it be the hotel motel tax, park, airport parking fees, whatever. When those new revenues came up, they were immediately dedicated. So, that took away the spirit of the funding formula that said the police is to get 24% of the undedicated funds. Obviously, once they're dedicated, they did not receive any funds from that funding source. So, here we are today with this legislation, trying to straighten out something that took place in 2006 that dedicated funds from the sale of city assets, streets, and now incorporating immovable property also, minus the asset sales, surplus asset sales, which by other ordinances already maintain where those monies go to the police and fire department. So, what we're doing here is clearing that out, that this is not going to be straight dedicated money. When the money comes in, the police department will get their entitled 24%. The other 76%, as I read in Section One, will go to the capital funds where any councilman has a need in his districts will make his need known. And as said by Councilman Impastada and Councilman Conley and Councilman Klein, we're going to sit here and listen and make those decisions after we get public input, after we get professional input from the engineers, whether it be for street improvements, and then we'll decide where to send that money contrary to where it's done now. That money now goes to an individual councilman, and there is no public input. There is no public discussion on how that money is spent. Nobody really sees where that money spent. It just goes away. And I'm not saying it's improperly spent. I do, from my understanding and from my checking, agree it was spent as it was intended. But there's no clear public trail to show that there was input from the public as to the need for that purpose when it was spent, having the best need for even the district, more or less the city. So, what we're saying here is- So what we're saying here is, we're going to take this money, put it up on a pedestal, in a capital fund, and then we're going to allow public input, professional engineers, to give us the input to show where this money at that time needs to be spent and spent wisely and the most logical sense. As the police chief has said, yes. In 2004, when there was some refunding or reallocating of funds for the police department, layoffs did take place. Unfortunately, there were a lot of people in my departments that I supervised at the time had to be laid off. And that's a very tough decision to participate in. I do not like seeing any department have to lay off people. We don't have those issues today. We're trying to resolve all departments' funding. The council will always listen to the mayor and the need for his departments and find or help him with the funding. The police chief has expressed his desire or his need for this money as the previous police chiefs in Caraway and Congemi have done before the councils in the past. So we're just following the directions that come to us and working to find the funds to meet those needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Segura. And this, you know, we all have stated our position here. We know where we are, and this is how a government should be ran. And I don't think nothing that either one of us will say will sway the other person. We will just have to wait and see what happens after this vote. But I would like to correct Councilman Segura's math when he said only two years. I think it was 2010, which means it's five years. So, so I just wanted to... No, 2009, 2009 was actually when I, when I got on the council. So I didn't want to, I didn't want to push that, but it's five years. So, that's okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 4-1. Councilmember Carroll's opposed. Item 13 is resolutions and motions by council members. Item 13A is a resolution amending Resolution Number B-12709 relative to the city of Kenner purchasing policy.
Motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilman Conley.
Councilman Segura?
What we're doing here is just, I guess, on one hand, just a little bit of cleanup, or so to speak, on keeping the city abreast to its current times, economics. Again, going back to the charter when it was first enacted in 1974, it laid out that, as I recall, Mr. Powers I know was involved, but $500 was the limit for a city purchase order. Anything above that came to the city council for approval. And that was in the wisdom at the time, no problem. In 1985, or '84 was the vote, but '85 it was enacted. The charter amendment was put out to raise the limit to 5,000, any money that by ordinance must come to the council. The council, somewhere in that timeline, in its own policy, said, well, well, I'm sorry, in 1996, the council changed the policy and said anything over 2,500, instead of the 500, they raised it to 2,500, would have to come to the council in the form of a resolution. And then anything over 5, again, would be an ordinance. Since 1996, when that was put in place, as everyone, I'm sure, is certainly aware, inflation, cost of living, cost of doing business has gone up. A quick calculation using the Consumer Product Index Calculator shows that we had a, from 1996 to now, about a 51% increase with inflation. So that $2,500 purchase today would take $3,700 to purchase. So what we're trying to do now is move this up to the 5,000 mark for two reasons. One, to be more in line with the economy and make this process a little smoother for the departments to make their purchases. This will not change the city's purchasing procedures. The mayor has his procedures in place. He will still use those procedures on how monies up to the 5,000 are spent, as well as over 5. Quigley will address that in a moment, if he wants to. But what this will do then is allow a smoother, faster doing business approach, because they do not have to have a built-in delay of any purchase between $2,500 and $4,999, which would have to, by right now, go through a resolution to the council. So this would allow a speeding up of city services to be put forth. So I'll finish up, and then I'll close and...
Thank you, Councilman. Mr. Quigley, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, the administration appreciates this resolution being put before, before the council. As Councilman Segura said, the, the resolution that first enacted that was back in 1996. So we think it's time, it's necessary time to go ahead and address this. And just so you'll know, state bid law doesn't require anything, doesn't require any type of approval, anything below $10,000. So we're still well below the 10,000 threshold for state, state bid law. And just as Councilman Segura just said, even though it won't require a resolution, we still will be doing our normal process, whether it be phone bids or fax bids and so forth. So the only thing is now, it'll just make it a little bit more efficient, a little bit quicker, so that some of these smaller items, we can go ahead and we can get it and better serve the people. So we're very much in favor of this. We appreciate the council putting this on. And, you know, we strongly recommend that you approve this, this change to the purchasing policy and the approval policy.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Klein, you have the floor.
City can get more things done faster. Is that, is that about it?
Oh, yeah. This definitely streamlines and makes it more efficient. But again, I just want to reiterate that we'd still be going through the same processes. It just eliminates the council approval process, and we can get the goods a lot faster. And, you know, like I said, service, service to people in a more efficient streamlined manner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. And I too will be supporting this. And also, we have a fantastic purchasing department. We're in the year 2014 now. Things have changed. Costs have gone up. It is everything that we can do to make the late, the men and women that work in our department to make things flow a little bit faster, so they can spend time on purchases that have a higher dire value, to be able to make things flow smoother, and to be able to be quicker and to do things faster, be more efficient. And I think this will do that. It's a great, it doesn't need an ordinance, but I think it is something good, housekeeping, that we should do to ensure that we become, we stay above the curve as things relate to being professional and to be able to support businesses and citizens when they come into the community to do business here. So I too will be supporting this. Thank you.
Madam Clerk? Oh, Councilman Segura, to close.
A quick comment I meant to include in my opening statement. But in doing some research of the state, other cities, other parishes, and I know Mr. Quigley mentioned the state 10,000. But I noticed, and I got the city of Lake Charles's purchasing manual sent to me. And in their purchasing manual, it says that any purchase up to 5,000 does not go to the city council. 5,000 to 30,000 may go to the council. And then anything over 30,000 must go to the council. So we still got a long ways to go before we're as liberal as some of these other cities. So don't be too concerned that we're just letting money fly out the door. We're going to still be monitoring, as he said. The purchasing procedures will still be in place to keep track of where the money goes. Thank you.
Council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 13B was taken earlier in the meeting. Item 13C is a resolution asking officials of the city of Kenner to explore and support endeavors to bring commerce to the city of Kenner by utilizing the River Levy Bachelor within the Kenner city limits. Motion by Councilmember Conley, second by Councilmember Segura. Councilmember Conley?
Councilman Conley, you have the floor.
Yeah, basically what this is, is we have been contacted by officials with the Port of South Louisiana and some Kenner business people who want to explore the potential of bringing commerce into the Kenner, into the city of Kenner through our river batchers. It's the only raw land that we have in Kenner, really, that, 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 which serves such a useful purpose that we haven't explored or taken any kind of advantage of. So in the meetings with these folks, I was committing to them how serious the city is, how we want this endeavor and we want to explore these opportunities. So by putting this resolution on, it's just an expression of this council and the administration that, you know, we are serious and that we will bring the right people to the table, and that we would like to get something accomplished as a city, as a whole, to utilize that, that raw land on what they call the wet side of the levee and bring a little excitement to the city, as well as some, some sales tax dollars and maybe some, some property tax. So I would appreciate your support.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk?
All members please...
Councilman Segura, did you want to? Okay.
All members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 14 is items removed from the consent agenda. We had none. Item 15 is acceptance of contracts and similar matters approved by the mayor. Item 15A is a resolution accepting as complete the contract with Frischerts Electric Company Incorporated dated September 19th, 2013, regarding the replacement of playground lighting at Susan Park Playground for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Chairman, we've received a request this evening for a one-meeting deferral. Motion by Councilmember Carroll, second by Councilmember Segura on a one-meeting deferral. All members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15B is summary ordinance number 11,782, in order to accept in the responsive bid received from Nodico Industries LLC in the amount of $5,728 to furnish 16 250-watt lights for the Fuel Depot in accordance with telephone bid number T142219 for the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Motion by Councilman Klein, second by Councilman Impastada.
All council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15C is summary ordinance number 11,783, in order to accept in the responsive bid received from Lafarge West Incorporated for the supply of limestone aggregate on an as-needed basis in accordance with sealed bid number 14-6237 in an amount not to exceed $125,000 per year for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilman Segura, second by Councilman Carroll.
All council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15D is a resolution accepting as complete the contract with Boe Brothers Construction Company LLC dated April 23rd, 2014, regarding the repairs for the West Esplanade Avenue bridges over the Duncan Canal for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilman Klein, second by Councilman Conley.
All council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 15E is a resolution approving change order number 1 to the contract with the Rotolo Consultants Incorporated dated March 31st, 2014, regarding the Lake Town Media and Beautification Project to add an additional $47,602.41 to the contract and accept the project as complete for the Department of Public Works.
Motion by Councilman Conley, second by Councilman Klein.
All council members, please vote. Mr. Chairman, motion passes 5-0. Item 16 is ordinances and resolutions in summary for first reading. Item 16A is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Economical Janitorial and Paper Supplies LLC for a six-month contract to supply copy paper for various city of Kenner departments in accordance with telephone bid number T142225 in an amount not to exceed $10,000. Item 16B is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Professional Construction Services Incorporated in the amount of $43,149 for the removal of Old Lake Town Wooden Pier in accordance with sealed bid number 14-6242 for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16C is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Rainy Electronics Incorporated in an amount of $8,667 to furnish and install one scoreboard at the Lattice Playground in accordance with letter bid number 14-1521 in approving a contract with Rainy Electronics in the amount of $17,334 to furnish and install one scoreboard at the Lattice Playground and one additional scoreboard at a playground to be determined for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16D is an ordinance accepting the responsive bid received from Rainy Electronics Incorporated in the amount of $8,667 to furnish and install one scoreboard at a Wood Lake Playground in accordance with letter bid number 14-1522 in approving a contract with Rainy Electronics Incorporated in the amount of $17,334 to furnish and install one scoreboard at Wood Lake Playground and one additional scoreboard at a playground to be determined for the Department of Parks and Recreation. Item 16E is an ordinance accepting the lowest responsive bid received from Rotolo Consultants Incorporated doing businesses, RCI, for a two-year contract in the amount of $61,094 for the Lake Town Media and Landscape Maintenance Program, Vintage Drive to Lake Punch Train Levy, in accordance with sealed bid number 14-6240 for the Department of Public Works. Item 17 is reports from the council and our special committees.
Excuse me. I don't see the lights on any other council people. Councilman Conley, you have the floor.
I would just like to say that this council and administration went out on Tuesday after that hour crime. And I was very impressed at how vigilant the city is and at the neighborhood gatherings. And it, as was stated over and over, it's important that the neighbors know the neighbors, and that's, that's the best way to fight crime. Be your eyes and ears of your neighborhood. It started Sunday with a kickoff at Lake Town by the Kenner Police Department and a host of other law enforcement agencies that had SWAT demonstrations, dog demonstrations, and Karma, the band was playing. So it was a great time, Sunday. But I just want to thank everybody who hosted a party and that attended a party. And I know that one of the civic groups, I think it's Shatso Estates Lakefront, was collecting cans for the food bank. And they said that there was, this was the most they've ever collected in a year for, for the night hour crime.
Thank you, sir. Mayor DeFrances, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. I would just like to mention two quick events that I was asked to bring up at this council meeting. And one has to do with Halloween, and we want to make sure all our children have a safe Halloween. And on October 25th, join the Esplanade Mall from Malloween in Center Court from 1:00 to 3:00. You bring your families there to the mall for trick or treat. They will have Halloween-themed activities and a fashion show for children to show off their costumes, their Halloween costumes, as well as activities for the families. They'll get a chance to trick or treat from store to store in a safe environment. And this is an event open to the entire community. And one more new event at the mall, which I think, we want to bring people to Kenner. We want people to see all we have to offer here in the city of Kenner. And they will be hosting a bridal soiree at the Esplanade Mall on November 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be caterers there, venue, all types of venues that brides might be interested in renting for their, for bridal, for their, for their, for their bridal shower or for the marriage ceremony itself. Bridal consultants, gift registries, florists, photographers. And so again, if, they'll have hors d'oeuvres, they'll have drinks, they'll have a fashion show with the latest styles in bridal gowns, tuxedos, bridesmaids, and mothers' gowns. So if anyone's interested, please come to Kenner. We want you to come to Kenner, see what we have to offer, not just at the Esplanade Mall, but the city as a whole. We have wonderful restaurants, we have wonderful shops, and we want you to come out here to Kenner. Go to Lake Town, go to Rivertown. We have so much to offer. Please, please come out here and see what Kenner really is all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Impastada, you have the floor, sir.
Just a reminder to everyone mainly who's watching, but I guess also that's here, is there's a November 4th election and early voting can be...
there's a November 4th election and early voting can be done in Rivertown, October 21st through the 28th. So, encourage everyone to come to Rivertown during that time. It's very easy to early vote out there and support some Kenner businesses in Rivertown while you're there.
Thank you, sir. I too would like to thank the chief and all of the police department, all of the officers that drove around on the national, national night out against crime, like Councilman Conley said, it started on Sunday. It was an opportunity for the many different law enforcement organizations to come to the City of Kenner and see what we have to offer in Lake Town, to be able to come together for the general public, to talk to the different organizations, to get a feel, because I think some of the issues with police department people sometime are taken back and are afraid to talk to the officers who are fathers and grandfathers and kind of dehumanize them in a sense. And this is an opportunity for everyone to have a conversation with the police officers. I even saw a number of the police officers dancing to the line dancing out there. So, it was a nice day for all, and on the day within the City of Kenner, we had over close to 30 different groups, organizations that had the Night Out Against Crime. The police officers made probably as many as, as they could make until it got dark, but it was a good, it was a good feeling. Good feeling to, for the community, to see the police officers, to see everyone and to feel comfortable that we have a new chief, and he stepped right in line with the past officers to ensure that the City of Kenner is a safe place to live. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Item eighteen is new business. We have none. Item nineteen is unfinished business, any or motions to reconsider or remove from the table position. We have none. Item twenty is persons wishing to address the council on special subject matters.
Yes, we have a few. Yes, sir, Namon?
Almorella, 4260 East Loyola Drive, 5th District, 42 years. I want to talk about an incident that took place on the street in front of my house, Sunset Boulevard, on Monday afternoon at 1:30. An 18-wheeler hauling automobiles loaded from top to bottom on Little Sunset Boulevard in my neighborhood, right in front of my house, attempting to turn onto that bridge. Now, I went outside, this trailer was about 50, about 53 feet, between 53 and 60 feet, man. I went outside and had, and I confronted this man, this driver, and I told him, I asked him what was he doing in this neighborhood with that rig. Now, I said, you don't even think about going on that bridge, man, because you're exceeding the 40-ton load limit. Now, let me tell you people on this council and this administration why it's so imperative that these vehicles like this be monitored in this city, particularly right there on my street, East Loyola, and Joe Yanni on the other side and Sunset on my side. There's a natural gas line, man, that's mounted to that bridge on the left, it's a left-hand turn if you're coming from Williams Boulevard, and it's a right-hand turn on that bridge if you're coming from Wood Lake. Any mishap on that bridge at all will take out Wood Lake Estates, Chateau Lakefront, a vast portion of, a vast portion of University City and Place Ponchartrain. This is a very volatile situation right there in front of my house. I had been talking to the previous 5th District councilmen. There's a drop-off on that bridge, man, on that side where that natural gas line is mounted to that bridge. There's no barricade there. If a car misjudges their turn and goes off right there on that drive down, they're going right on top of that gas line. Now, something needs to be done about this. I went inside and I called the Kenner police after I told him to get that rig out of my neighborhood, and he started proceeding down East Loyola, because that's the only way he could go. I went and called the Kenner police and I reported it. 30-minute response time, totally unacceptable. Unacceptable, man. 30-minute response time, the policeman came, he talked to me, he went to see if he could catch the guy. I don't know what happened after that. Okay? Now, these things need to be monitored, man. We have the, we have the, the capabilities to monitor these type of vehicles that's traveling our street. This driver told me that he, that a Kenner policeman confronted him and told him, don't worry about it, just get out the neighborhood. Now, I'm not going to say that's true, and I'm not going to say it's untrue, because I didn't hear it, but I'm telling you what that driver told me. Okay? Now, talk about tickets, the police chief said 140...
30 seconds, Mr. Morello.
That's a big ticket right there, man. Okay? Now, I'm going to tell you something. This, these things need to be monitored, and I think some of y'all need to spend less time at the Chateau Country Club and focus more on what's going on in these neighborhoods, particularly with an incident like that. I got, how much time I got left, Greg?
About 15 seconds, Mr. Morello.
Okay. I want to confirm this real quick to the police chief. What he said in here, the layoffs from 2004, man, was a direct result of a political and personal feud between the mayor at the time and the police chief at the time. That's what those layoffs was about. Once again, no requirement. Council voted to let the police department roll over their safe budget without amending the charter. Mayor come in here, took out the personal feud, political feud, that's what happened. Anybody got any comments, any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Morello.
Thank you.
If there are no questions, Elder Jackie Cockerham Brown. Thank you, ma'am, and please state your name and address.
Yes, good evening. I'm Elder Jacqueline Brown Cockerham Brown. My address is 2610 Decatur Street Apartment A, Kenner, Louisiana 70062. Okay, and Kenner has a problem. I want you to take a ride through Kenner, as I did. I'm not pleased, but very disappointed as I observed the various signs introducing a community or subdivision. The signs are very obviously depicting the socioeconomic levels of those communities. My request is that you ride, reconsider, tear down, and reconstruct signs in District One. Basically, the Veteran Heights sign, the Lincoln Manor sign, South Kenner at Fillmore and Airline Drive. From my view, there is differentiation between district and city. Even the signs in the front of the parking lot of the brake tag station is quality, but no citizens reside there. Some of these signs are rotting, splitting wood stains that are really sad and sorrowful-looking wooden sticks. Do the right thing. The wooden signs are demeaning, they're derogatory and discriminatory. Treat all of the neighborhoods of the city equally. We're all citizens, taxpayers, and equally sensitive about our neighborhoods. We'll do the same respect. No wood or stubble, but the same or better quality material. The saying is that when one part's, one part of the body hurts, the whole body hurts. Well, I say to you, when one part of Kenner looks bad, all of the hearts of Kenner look bad. So, as our councilman, Impastado, Impastado? Okay. Said repeatedly, in the best interest of Kenner, in the best interest of Kenner, allow all of Kenner to look like Kenner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and I appreciate your, your comments and your concerns, particularly in the area of District One. I am the councilman of District One. I've had some conversations with Mr. Gonzalez as it relates to sign, and we are evaluating that. The, 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 the sign that you're referring to, the newer signs, is the request or is the, the new administration coming in and making signs, putting up signs to depict their, their interpretation of what the city should represent, but in any way, it should not reflect anything less for our district. We are talking about that now to, to, to be able to address those signs, to upgrade them to the point where they should be consistent throughout the city. Obviously, funding coming to play, and because we're historical district, District One, I always tend to have a little, little respect for the historical signs, not to be just like the other signs, but to depict the historical value of a sign, to show that in some way, shape, or form. But by any means, the quality should never, never be less than that. And I will be continually talking to, to Mr. Gonzalez. I will get back with you as it relates to the signs, particularly in, and we have to consider sometimes if it's a state highway, how much space we have on the medium to, because every sign will not be able to be as large as every sign, because those are some things we have to consider. But the quality should never be less, and that is our responsibility to ensure that, particularly my responsibility as it relates to District One. So, thanks again for your support, and I will be keeping you informed and updated on our progress.
Yes, because I think we do have small, medium, and large concrete blocks.
Yes.
And we should not improvise. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. If she's still here, Ms. Mary Ross. If not, I don't see any more names on the list, so can we have a motion to adjourn? Second motion. Thank you.